Okay, we'll bring the meeting to order here in public hearing. We have several public hearings, so we're gonna go through these quickly. Public hearing number one, proposal of law number four related to environmental advisory committee terms of office. Second time, proposed local law number four related to environmental advisory committee terms of office. Based on that last time, proposal of law number four related to environmental advisory committee terms of office. I will close the public hearing. And the word of public hearing number two, proposal of law number five related to fire commission terms of office. Proposal of law number five related to fire commission terms of office. Last time, proposal of law number five related to fire commission terms of office. Close that public hearing. Public hearing number three, proposal of law number six related to historic commission terms of office. And proposal of law number six related to historic commission terms of office. Last call, proposal of law number six related to historic commission terms of office. Close public hearing number three. Public hearing number four, proposal of law number seven related to landscape planning and design committee terms of office. Again, proposal of law number seven related to landscape planning and design committee terms of office. Last call, proposal of law number seven related to landscape planning and design committee terms of office. Proposal public hearing number four, public hearing number five, proposal of law number eight related to board of public works terms of office. And proposal of law number eight related to board of public terms works terms of office. Last call, proposal of law number eight related to board of public works terms of office. Public hearing number five, number six, proposal of law number nine related to wastewater treatment terms of office. Again, proposal of law number nine related to wastewater treatment terms of office. Last call, proposal of law number nine related to wastewater terms of office. Close public hearing number six. Public hearing number seven, proposal of law number ten related to youth bureau commission terms of office. Again, proposal of law number ten related to youth bureau commission terms of office. Last call, proposal of law number ten related to youth bureau commission terms of office. Close public hearing number seven. Proposal of law number eleven related to the title of the city's part-time judge. Again, proposal of law number eleven related to the title was city's part-time judge. Last call, proposal of law number eleven related to the title of the city's part-time judge. It will close the public hearing number eight. I will call it to order. Roll call please.
Councilmember Scott.
The President.
Councilmember Solomon.
President.
Councilmember Penella.
President.
Councilmember Lane.
Here.
Councilmember Thompson.
Here.
Councilmember Carleton.
Here.
Councilmember Beckwith.
President.
Councilmember Michaels.
Here.
Charles Rice.
We can get a moment of silence first to make sure we recognize this Black History Month and Tyree Nichols and Mathis. We'd like to recognize them and then certainly our victims in the earthquake. They're all in silence. Thank you. Privileges of the floor. Does anybody sign up for the privileges of the floor?
No one is on the list.
All right, thank you. Finance reports. Okay, in your packets, you have budget transport, budget transfers and incommissions. So when we vote to recognize the receiving of these, that's to move those accomplishments forward. For the, which we talked about during the budget hearings, to move those 2022 budget transfers and conferences rather than do resolutions. I figured I would just do it all in one report. Do that. So hopefully that's okay. ARP funding update, as there is some addressing of ARP funding may be recognized to be needed at this meeting. I figure we give an update on where that's at. Nothing's changed since the last time, but I figured it was a good time to bring it up at least quarterly. So we haven't done that in at least a quarter. And also, as always, the capital and grant projects, AP sheet is also in those financial documents as well as the monthly financial review. Does anybody have any questions on those finances? And I get a motion to accept those. The Cardiff, all in favor?
Aye.
Hearing with the financials. So mayor's report. So we have a lot of these vacancies or we have this one of these boards we're gonna talk about here as we go real quick. But we do have some vacancies in the environmental advisory board. So if people have some suggestions of them and your recognition. EPW Landscape Historic and Youth Bureau. We've been making some good attempts to try to fill some of these positions. So when we go through these, if you can, you had some good people in your constituency that you think would be great, wanna add back to it. And even some of the wild ones, maybe would be a good ones to have, being part of a solution. That would be awesome. So any, any help we can get to that, please email myself or Robin and I'll be there. Mr. Jewett will make sure that gets done.
Real quick, that name's Scott. None of us inside of these boards, correct?
That's correct.
Sure.
Yeah. You're certainly welcome to attend any of them. And everybody can attend. I recommend at least the advisor or the representative for those boards, we go post them, that would be great. So, real quick, I guess I'll hit fire chief first. We have a couple of new people were able to swear in. I think councilmember Lane was there and councilmember Michaels came to swear in. So we have two people that people would like to speak about.
So, good news. We're very fortunate in this. And I'll bring back a little bit of history here. In December, I came for you recognizing we had two people who are gonna be retiring in the first quarter of 2023. Council was allowed, allowed me to hire two firefighters to start before the retirements to get them to the fire training academy, which is 14 weeks. Get them back sooner than later, so we can, I'm gonna wanna have the people to minimize your over. So, it's a great pleasure that I bring tonight firefighter Andrew Nyber, firefighter Nate Stockwin. There are two new hired, newest hires. They were four on Wednesday of last week. Right now, they're the training officer here in Cortland going over Cortland stuff. And on the 20th of February, they start their endeavor at Fire Academy for 14 weeks. So we're very fortunate to have them here. They are both from the Cortland area. That always makes us feel good. They're locals, if you will. And they came to the interview process, went through it very well, and we're excited. They're gonna be an asset to this organization in the city. So I wanted to bring them here. We'll probably bring them back here if they get done with the academy and do this all again, but if you want to see them here. So very happy to have you here.
All right.
Thank you, guys, and welcome to the board. So I just got back from Albany today. It was since Sunday there, working on a bunch of different things. Were able to meet with some, you know, four or five representatives from Albany as well as the lieutenant governor and the governor to talk about some things and talk about some issues that we have, as well as fellow mayors and try to resolve different ways and try not to re-advent the wheel. So very enlightening and educational and certainly found many other things that we can work on together. So I'm hoping to get some more of that working forward. There seems to be a lot of issues now and a lot of concerns that are released in the mayor's budget and from a lot of different areas, from the Medicaid end of it, would be a huge impact to us locally, would shut down President Kennedy drugs. I had that with him yesterday as well. And then we shut down, you know, our Kennedy drugs because they can't, the amount of money is not being upgraded. Of course, we have our homeless thing we'll talk about further. There's some other things on that. There is great, some great housing initiatives that are in there, which are great. So there's good and bad, but hopefully some of those, the bad ones will all go away. That's what we're hoping for. So that was a lot of the conversation at the, at Nikon meeting and is beneficial. Currently working on the crossing government contract and the fire department contracts are now coming up. You know, now we have a seat on the insurance advisory, the insurance advisory board and the finance committee that I'm on for our insurance policies. So for the health insurance, I'm working on that. Trash committee met this past week and discussed some things that maybe one of you can address that. I mean, your word report, if you could, please. Talk about some of the issues we have there. Certainly, we have a lot of, the biggest issues I see now is the toilets out front of buildings, especially some of the newer ones in some of the areas that are not being addressed or people leaving them out. So we have a plan to get it, put together a flyer. I'll talk about that a little bit more. So, yeah, I was also able to meet with the office of the cannabis. They're just a newly organized group and I was able to meet with the director, which was great. And it's very exciting that, you know, they have basically no employees. Now they have 150. So they're still trying to figure this out, trying to get it. So we're kind of on the ground floor. It's trying to understand how that's gonna happen for bodegas, you know. Some of the stuff we were talking about that's a possibility later is, which I never thought about, like somebody might put in for a permit to do a yoga, you know. A big yoga, I don't know what else they call it, or a food truck. Those are, so those are issues that we're gonna have to probably be presented in front of us at some point because they'll be, they'll be authorized and be licensed. So it's gonna be an interesting, it's an interesting go of it, and it's all learning curve. But I think they're ahead of it in a lot of ways. They know billboards, which is great, although I did see that their Massachusetts isn't advertising here. So they should really be know billboards, you know. So anyhow, so because now they've taken the business outside of that. So I think they're, they seem to be on top of it. I'm super excited. And we have their attorneys, a local person from Homer. So Mr. Rumsey's son is doing that. So it's kind of neat to see some of that grow and some of that get together. And they seem to be on top of it. So I'm pretty excited about that. All right. I think that's all I had for right now. So we'll move into the word report.
Got it. All's quiet in Ward one. Just didn't wanna bring up a meeting I was fortunate to attend today. Really quick, I went to the Cortland County Tavern Restaurant Association. Meeting today headed up by the president Tammy Timmerman. Was a great meeting. I think the, the association is really there to help support all the citizens involved with food and, and or libations here inside the city. They really want to help people expand. And, you know, I think they're doing a great job considering when you look at the city of Portland. We really are a foodie city. We have some great food here. And I think they're doing an awesome job at not only getting out the information these people need to be able to move forward, but helping to support them. So that was a great meeting today. That's all I got.
Great. Thank you. Ms. Solomon?
I have notes. Don't wanna make Mr. Beckwith nervous, but I'll just give you notes.
Is your mic on?
Yes, I traded with him.
All right. Trying to shut me up.
So I'm glad everybody made it through the cold snap, the vicious cold snap that we had. And I am deeply grateful for the city workers we have who were out looking after us. The DPW police and fire. Our, our city workers who just slog through whatever weather is thrown at them and keep the rest of us safe. And it sounds like everybody still has their fingers and toes. So that's very good. Meanwhile, it is, it is February. It is Black History Month. And we've had another natural incident of a black man being killed by police, this time in Memphis. Memphis was also where Martin Luther King Jr. was shot and killed. So long history of racism in that city. Tyree Nichols' death won't be in vain. And I just wanted to mention that we can't do much about Memphis. Years ago, I met a man from El Salvador who was talking about how hard he worked to change things in El Salvador. And his advice to anybody was just to work on your own sphere of influence. Whether that be your street, your neighborhood, your small city, we can affect Cortland. And if you're somebody who is concerned about Cortland, if you see inequities that some of us don't see, I encourage you to get involved, to get on some of these boards and commissions, speak up, show up. And help, help make the change that you wanna see. All right. More of a now news. There are shoes on the wire halfway up the hill on Clayton Ave. Hate to bring that up, but it just looks trashy. There's a concern regarding the two-hour parking proposal for the parking lot of the Hollywood and the Elks. The people at the Elks rent the Elks Lodge to people who tend to have events that last longer than two hours. So they're concerned about that. And I understand that there will be a town hall type meeting run by the mayor at some point from there.
Well, the, the whole ground now, I'm not sure when that meeting is for that whole row up there.
But it will be announced.
It'll be discussed.
People will have an opportunity to be.
As well as here. I mean, there'll be public hearings here as well. I get the parking design. I mean, it's way preliminary right now. So I think it went to the DPW commission and then I think it got out from there as they were seeking ideas. So I think.
Okay, great. And then I had a concern regarding Parker School. There were questions about whether it could be designated a historical site. And I explained who was on our committee and where we're going with that. This person has a great desire to preserve symbols of local historical importance at Parker, such as the mural about Alton D. Parker's life. And we will be having at some point a public forum for that kind of discussion as well. And that would be a good time to, to talk about that. Also, there's constituent told me about a house at A Maple Ave that is uninhabited. And I saw, may have critters getting into the foundation. I mentioned it to the mayor tonight. And he printed out a report for me from William Everett. So they are already on it. And I'll be able to report back to that constituent about how things are going. I understand that we lost a boiler at the water, at the sewage treatment plant this morning. And Mr. Adams is already thinking about the most efficient, best way, in, in his fashion. When something bad happens, he uses it as an opportunity to be looking at how we can be more efficient and improve on what we've got. And so he's already, the wheels are turning. He's already got a plan for a better system. And we're lucky to have enough position. That's it in the second floor.
Sure. Thank you.
Yeah. Couple of things in the third board. But first, I am the liaison to the DPW and attended my first board meeting. And was very, it was very educated. And, and I'm glad that I'm on and I look forward to working with everybody, the commission and Nick and Al. There was a minor garbage issue on Elwood that was solved to the residents liking. So that worked out well. Then, of course, Roy is already on this, but I'm gonna bring it up. Broad now has become, just it's exploded all of a sudden. From Broadway down all the way to Pleasant, both sides of the street, your ward and mine. And he's on it. So it'll be taken care of.
Exploded the trash?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All over. It strewn all over. So, so that's, but Roy's on it. And lastly, and correct me if I'm wrong, Nick and Al. So Atkins, Elwood and Forest run parallel. And then George Street runs behind all three streets. And Nysig has started to lay new gas lines along George Street and like on the border of the Water Works, right along with that. So that started. So that's a good thing. So there's upgrades going on. So that will be good. And that's it for me.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Lane?
I have a list. Ward four has been pretty quiet. I did receive a call about when, when are the smaller trash bins going to be available? And I, I told the person that as soon as they were available, I would let her know. There was a question about the salting of streets. And Nick answered the question immediately. Noise from the, the railroad tracks at Pasley and Tompkins, which the tracks are no longer used. Kind of a constituent wondered, you know, can they be pulled up? Because they're very noisy. And I can attest to that as well. And there are heaves in the road. And I don't know where, you know, that's in cold, warm. But the constituent was concerned about that. I attended, as the mayor said, the new firefighter swearing-in ceremony, which was, it was wonderful. I attended the DPW board meeting and, and got some interesting information from that meeting. I attended a Zoom meeting that was sponsored by Assemblywoman Dr. Anna Callis at Public Safety. It was presented by the Barrett Institute. It was very interesting. Onto a little different subject. Anyone who's ever worked in a school knows that schools are kept running by secretaries and custodians. Everybody else is on the fridge, you know, but they're the ones that keep, and tech people, tech people keep running too. In my opinion, City Hall is kept running by the following women. Susan Wisset. Kathy Milron. Wenan McMahon. Connie Sorrell. G. Reese. Laura Morak. And Cheryl Doolittle. These women are considered the workhorses of the second floor, and I would like to thank them for keeping the city.
This is a tough act to follow.
For work. I don't have a full page. But I do have what I'll call three and three. For the ward, I would like to echo what councilperson Solomon shared earlier. In light of it, we see something in our city. If we know about something in our city, don't hold on to it. If we see where it can be better, share it. Link up with your neighbors and bring it forth. And, and let's try to do something about it. Two is I wanna thank DPW for going around the fifth ward, looking for trees that need to be trimmed back. Making safe passageway for trucks and different pedestrians walking. So thank you for cutting back those trees. And also, I'd like to acknowledge the help of council and code enforcement, Roy, for taking care of a decade-long eyesore on the fifth ward. And, and making that neighborhood a little bit better. So thank you for, for that. And then talking about the bins and, you know, and our trash disposal, I have a couple of things to add. But Bill, don't, don't hesitate to, you know, chime in if I miss something here. But we did talk about the, the small bins aren't one order. And we're, we're just waiting for them to come in. And so hopefully those will be ensued. And the folks that feel as though they need them will, will have them soon. We have, also had some conversations just about placement on the curb, education around that. And how long they should be placed on the, the curb before they're brought back to what we will call an acceptable hiding area or distance from the curves. And so those are some of the things that we've talked about as well as, you know, should, should those receptacles be shut instead of teeming over with, with trash? Which might be what's leading to some of the overspill in the Brighton, Brighton Street area. So, or Brighton Ave area. I think that's some of the things that we talked about. So that's it.
Thank you.
According to six wars, but like I said, education, we're gonna put some education into public as to different things we can do that. We don't want them, we don't want them to be an eyesore. I don't care if, you know, we don't know that. We can move off. We can fill all the garages in the house, try to put them in an area where it's, you know, so it's not that unsightly. So there's good, good conversation. And I think, I think in all in all, it's a great system that we're using. I've got a lot of, you know, everybody's happy. There's people that were happy that wanted smaller bins and they're laying out bigger bins. Everybody's pretty happy with that. There's really anything negative to it at all. That's it.
Okay. And one, one extra point. If, you know, folks watching for the record, five feet apart, the, the bins, I don't know, make a, a line in the dirt near your curb, but the bin, but the, or the snow, right? Bring your dog out to that. But keep the, keep the bins about five feet apart so that the trucks can come by and take care of it.
And face in the right direction.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I seen one person shoot one, one way and the other, the other way.
Really?
Same house. So take your, right? Okay.
Real quick, who's on the trash committee? Wayne, Fred, Derek, Wayne, Seth and Billy are gonna do a YouTube video. We want you to film it.
We're, we're gonna do exactly, because they really think that people just don't understand it.
I'll bring my dogs.
I mean, I see them in the middle of the road. People put them out right on the ground and they have the other morning, you know. No, you're right. I'm just, yeah, I mean, I don't know what, but also I think it might be a good, might be a good thing. Because I really just think people don't comprehend.
You didn't understand it. So you should know that.
It's not a bad idea.
All right.
On the light side, all good. First through the eighth ward for me, and this hasn't been as good as well.
Thank you. The eighth ward, Mr. Michaels.
The eighth ward, yes. Billy was mentioning totes being in front of a garage, exactly with mine are. I don't wanna be going by my house or nothing. But they'll be there inside, moving around to the side. I did have one issue where we're getting totes as soon as we get some smaller ones and an individual will receive the trade there is in the small ones. And the other thing with, with totes, I'm finding out that I don't have to put my receptacle tote out every week. Yeah, because, you know, it takes forever to fill the darn thing. Trash, on the other hand, you probably wouldn't want to empty that on a regular basis. But, you know, there may be times where you really only have one, one tote out there. It's not a problem regarding spacing and placement.
Hello?
I, I thought it was the firefighter swearing in. Freshmen were great. Talked to them. Nice day. We feel at a call regarding parking around the Elks. I think the individual had made several phone calls to other people. So that's a work in progress. Something was mentioned a few weeks ago that, that, that whole parking lot between Elks and Hollywood is gonna be revamped. Maybe we'll probably talk more on this, but by revamping it, there's additional parking spaces that will be created that, that, that are not there now. So that'll certainly provide more parking for businesses in that area when the time arises. The other thing is coal patch. I, I think DPW for putting some on, on William Street. I now I think DPW for putting some on on William Street that needed certainly. A touch up there. We all know it's not going to last personal fall. We'll probably scrape right off, but. For the time being, it looks good. And thank you. And that's all I have for my word report.
Yeah, so a couple of things. We did have a water pipe breach here downstairs in the building. I think it was relatively quick and did a little layer and in the police department downstairs. So I forgot about that. And the other thing that I also I'm not sure. This last day, but just want to recognize. Mr. Riccatelli has had put in his two weeks notice. I think he's done seventeen or somewhere in that vicinity. So it's certainly appreciated his time here and appreciated. The good news is that he's staying in our county. And so he's moving over to the county aspect so we can still complain to him on our county road. So he's not getting no way too far, but we're certainly going to miss him and I'm sure Nick will miss him more than the rest of us, but we're all going to miss. A sense of humor too, for sure. Yeah, and then also we had a construction meeting on Main, and I think that's starting in the next few weeks too. So Main Street will be started. A little bit earlier because of the weather. So that's, I guess that's good news, right? There's a bad, bad news for some of us. Okay, approval of minutes. I have a motion to accept the minutes. Carpenter, all those in favor? Our resolutions, item number one, adopt local law number four related to environmental advisory committee terms of office.
Resolve that the common council does hereby adopt the local law to amend section ten dash three of the administrative code. To stagger current three year terms of office for the environmental advisory committee. Set the number of members at seven and authorize reestablishment of terms.
Good motion. Slane, Scott. Any questions on this? Okay, so a move the question.
Councilmember Scott. Councilmember Solomon. Councilmember Penello. Councilmember Lane. Councilmember Thompson. Councilmember Carpenter. Councilmember Beckwith. Councilmember Michaels.
Agenda item number two, appoint environmental advisory committee members and reestablish terms of office.
We have amendment here. The. Second resolved strike planning commission. It should be, there's a typo, should be environmental advisory committee. Resolve that the common council does hereby reestablish the terms of office of environmental advisory committee members in accordance with. Section ten dash three of the city administration code. Be a further result if the common council does hereby confirm Mayor Steve's. Reappointment of the following individuals to the environmental advisory committee for reestablished terms of office. To expire as designated. And strike pleads in name of Sylvia Caddis. She no longer lives within the city of Portland. So the reappointments are Margaret Starr. For return to inspire twelve thirty one twenty three. Donald Chu to expire at the end of two thousand twenty four. Diane Chu to expire at the end of two thousand twenty four. John Bush to expire at the end of two thousand twenty five. Doctor Jeremy Jimenez to expire at the end of two thousand twenty five. Steven Broyles. Expire at the end of two thousand twenty five. And be it further resolved that upon the expiration of the terms designated above subsequent appointments. To the environmental advisory committee shall be for full three year terms of office as provided for in section ten dash three of the administrative code.
Mr. Beckwith, anybody have any questions? Anyone with questions?
Councilmember Scott. Councilmember Solomon. Councilmember Penello. Councilmember Lane. Councilmember Thompson. Councilmember Carpenter. Councilmember Beckwith. Councilmember Michaels.
Then I have number three, adopt local law number five related to fire commission terms of office.
Resolve that the common council does hereby adopt the local law to amend section C thirteen dash three of the city charter. To change the current three year terms of office for the fire commission to stagger five year terms and authorize reestablishment of terms.
Any motion? Now. Mr. Carpenter, any questions?
Councilmember Scott. Councilmember Solomon. Councilmember Penello. Councilmember Lane. Councilmember Thompson. Councilmember Carpenter. Councilmember Beckwith. Councilmember Michaels.
Agenda item number four, appoint fire commission members and reestablish terms of office.
Resolve that the common council does hereby reestablish the terms of office of fire commission members in accordance with. Section C thirteen dash three of the city charter. And be a further result that the common council does hereby confirm Mayor Steve's. Reappointment of the following individuals to the fire commission for reestablished terms of office to expire as designated. Responding heat, Paul Quinlan, Chris Hotchkiss, William Starr, Dale Salmyer. Be it further resolved that upon expiration of the terms designated above. Subsequent appointments to the fire commission shall be for full five year terms of office as provided for in section C thirteen dash three of the city charter.
Mr. Scott, Mr. Beckwith, anybody have any questions? Any with please?
Councilmember Scott. Councilmember Solomon. Councilmember Penello. Councilmember Lane. Councilmember Thompson. Councilmember Carpenter. Councilmember Beckwith. Councilmember Michaels.
Agenda number five, adopt local law number six relating to historic commission terms of office.
Resolve that the common council does hereby adopt the local law to amend section. Three hundred dash fifty one of the city administrative code. To stagger current three year terms of office for the historic commission and authorize reestablishment of terms.
In motion. Carpenter, any questions?
Councilmember Scott. Councilmember Solomon. Councilmember Penello. Councilmember Lane. Councilmember Thompson. Councilmember Carpenter. Councilmember Beckwith. Councilmember Michaels.
Then item number six, appoint historic commission members and reestablish terms of office.
Resolve that the common council does hereby reestablish the terms of office. Well, I've got another typo here. So that should be historic commission. Members in accordance with. Section. Three and typo two, I've got to correct that. Appropriate section of the city administrative code. Resolve that the common council does hereby confirm Mayor Steve's. Reappointment of the following individuals to the historic commission for reestablished terms of office to expire as designated. Members Linda Klein, Christine Barnes, Karina Murphy. Dan Denise, Kate O'Connell, Richard Stock. And be it further resolved that upon the expiration of the terms. Designated above subsequent appointments to the historic commission shall be for full three year terms of office as provided for. In section three hundred dash fifty one of the city administrative code.
Mr. Scott. Mr. Michaels, any questions? Please.
Councilmember Scott. Councilmember Solomon. Councilmember Penello. Councilmember Lane. Councilmember Thompson. Councilmember Carpenter. Councilmember Beckwith. Councilmember Michaels.
Agenda number seven, adopt local law number seven relating to landscape. Planning and design committee terms of office.
Resolve that the common council does hereby adopt the local law to amend section five dash twenty eight point one. Of the city charter to set stagger three year terms of office for the landscape planning and design committee and authorize reestablishment of terms.
Mr. Scott, any questions?
Councilmember Scott. Councilmember Solomon. Councilmember Penello. Councilmember Lane. Councilmember Thompson. Councilmember Carpenter. Councilmember Beckwith. Councilmember Michaels.
Agenda item number eight, appoint landscape planning and design committee members and reestablish terms of office.
Resolve that the common council does hereby reestablish the terms of office. Of the landscape planning and design committee members in accordance with section five dash twenty eight point. One of the city charter. And be it further resolved that the common council does hereby confirm Mayor Steve's reappointment. Of the following individuals to the landscape planning and design committee for reestablished terms of office to expire as designated. Members Mike Dexter, Diane Batting, Ann Doyle. Paul Peridine, Teresa Quail, Melinda Shamizu. And be it further resolved that upon the expiration of the terms designated above. Subsequent appointments to the landscape planning and design committee shall be for full three year terms of office as provided for in section five dash. Twenty eight point one of the city charter.
Beckwith, any questions?
Councilmember Scott. Councilmember Solomon. Councilmember Penello. Councilmember Lane. Councilmember Thompson. Councilmember Carpenter. Councilmember Beckwith. Councilmember Michaels.
Agenda item number nine, adopt local law number eight relating to board of public works term of office.
Resolve that the common council does hereby adopt the local law to amend section C eleven dash three of the city charter. Set three year stagger terms of office for the board of public works, authorize reestablishment of term.
I'll move it. Second.
So again, this now who's the second, Miss Lane? Any questions? Over please.
Councilmember Scott. Councilmember Solomon. Councilmember Penello. Councilmember Lane. Councilmember Thompson. Councilmember Carpenter. Councilmember Beckwith. Councilmember Michaels.
Agenda item number ten, appoint. Board of public work members and reestablish terms of office.
Resolve that the common council does hereby reestablish the terms of office of the board of public works members. In accordance with section C eleven dash three of the city charter. And be it further resolved that the common council does hereby confirm Mayor Steve's reappointment of the following individuals to the board of public works. For reestablished terms of office to expire as designated. Members Keith Van Gordon, Patrick O'Mara, William Stark, Mike Ertz. Mike. Doty. Marywell, or excuse me, Mary Lou Fordwell. And be it further resolved that upon the expiration of the terms designated above. Subsequent appointments to the board of public works will be for full three year terms of office. Provided for in section C eleven dash three of the city charter.
Good motion. There's a second. Michaels. And Mr. Thompson, Mr. Michaels, any questions? All those in favor? Getting mundane. I can't imagine writing all these, Andy. I appreciate. Yes.
Item number eleven, adopt local law number nine relating to wastewater treatment board terms of office.
Council does hereby adopt the local law to amend section C seventeen dash three of the city charter. To change the terms of office of the wastewater treatment board from three year. Three years to stagger five year terms and authorize reestablishment of terms.
I get a motion. Mr. Scott. Carpenter, any questions? Over please.
Councilmember Scott. Councilmember Solomon. Councilmember Penello. Councilmember Lane. Councilmember Thompson. Councilmember Carpenter. Councilmember Beckwith. Councilmember Michaels.
Agenda, agenda item number twelve. Point wastewater treatment board members and reestablish terms of office.
Resolve that the council does hereby reestablish the terms of office of wastewater treatment board members. In accordance with section seventeen dash three of the city charter. And be it further resolved that the common council does hereby confirm Mayor Steve's. Reappointment of the following individuals to the wastewater treatment board for reestablished terms of office to expire as designated. Members John Troy. William Starr, Stephen Broyles, Diane Potter. Harry Kent. Be it further resolved that upon the expiration of the terms designated above. Subsequent appointments to the wastewater treatment board shall be for full five year terms of office. As provided for in section C seventeen dash three of the city charter.
All right, any motion?
No motion.
Thank you. Thank you. I think we're getting tired here. Hey, mayor's question, please.
Councilmember Scott. Councilmember Solomon. Councilmember Penello. Councilmember Lane. Councilmember Thompson. Councilmember Carpenter. Member Beckwith. Councilmember Michaels.
Agenda item number thirteen, adopt local law number ten relating to youth bureau commission terms of office.
Resolve that the common council does hereby adopt the local law to amend section C fourteen dash three of the city charter. To change terms of office for the youth bureau commission from three year terms to staggered five year terms and authorize reestablishment of terms.
Can I get a motion from this lane?
Member Scott. Councilmember Solomon. Councilmember Penello. Councilmember Lane. Councilmember Thompson. Councilmember Carpenter. Councilmember Beckwith. Councilmember Michaels.
Agenda item number fourteen, appoint youth bureau commission members and reestablish term of office.
Resolve that the common council does hereby reestablish the terms of office of youth bureau commission members. In accordance with section C fourteen dash three of the city charter. And be it further resolved that the common council does hereby confirm Mayor Steve's. Reappointment of the following individuals to the youth bureau commission. For reestablished terms of office to expire as designated. Members Christina Gambetta. Allison Bian. Camilla. Cristela Yata. Rebecca Smith. Lori Hogan. And be it further resolved that the common council does hereby confirm Mayor Steve's appointment. Of the following individuals to the youth bureau commission for reestablished terms of office to expire as designated. Janice Myers, Susan Jewett, Andrew Pierce. And be it further resolved that upon expiration of the terms designated above. Subsequent appointments to the youth bureau commission shall be for for full five year terms of office. As provided for in section C fourteen dash three of the city charter.
We get a motion? The back with. The carpenter, any questions? Over please.
Councilmember Scott. Councilmember Solomon. Councilmember Penello. Councilmember Lane. Councilmember Thompson. Councilmember Carpenter. Councilmember Beckwith. Councilmember Michaels. And I'll just note I'll be passing forward. Appointment certification for. Be decided. Just be decided once.
Yeah, real quick while now we're done with all those boards, again. We had the recognition during Christmas time to to recognize that all the hard working time. And it really is appreciated. I mean, they do a lot of work. I think that DEW be kind for several hours of the night. Fire commission. The police, the police commission, you know, the landscape and design, we don't want to let them out. There is an article that was written about the Empire, the environmental committee. And there was some credit given to them for the trees and it got. It's true that they got dropped off, but that wasn't part of that. So. There was this confusion, but we certainly appreciate it. And somebody like Mr. Mr. Dexter, which I've got an email. He spent years doing this, years and years, really caring for our city, caring about those trees. He probably. Watched some of the trees grow and cut down. That's how long he's been doing it. So. We can't say enough for the appreciation we have on them. And so we thank them all again for that.
Then I have number fifteen, adopt local law number eleven related to the title of city's part time judge.
Resolve that the common council does hereby adopt the local law to amend section C five dash three of the city charter. To change the title of the part time position of acting city judge to part time city court judge. Of the city of Portland and be it further resolved that the local law shall read as follows.
Motion. Mr. Scott. The carpenter. The the impetus of this is when we remember we approved Mr. Nickerbocker's last meeting and then it became apparent. After we adopted that, that it was not appropriate title, that that title has changed and the courts were super specific about it. So that's why we're changing the charter to make the charter reflect what's actually that position is. So that's all the intent of this. Okay.
Councilmember Scott. Councilmember Solomon. Councilmember Penello. Councilmember. Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Aye.
Councilmember Michaels.
Aye.
Agenda item number sixteen, approve special event permit and sound device permit for the Corn Ducky Derby.
Resolved that the common council does hereby approve a special event permit. And a sound device permit without fee for the Corn Ducky Derby that be held in Soggett Park on May sixth, two thousand twenty-three from ten AM to two PM. In two thousand twenty-three.
Mr. Scott, Miss Lane. Any questions? Over please.
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Silliman.
Aye.
Councilmember Pannello.
Aye.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Aye.
Councilmember Michaels.
Aye.
Agenda item number seventeen, authorize agreement with Country Acres Pet Services and Animal Shelter.
Resolved that the common council does hereby affirm the authority of Mayor Steve entering to an agreement. For a period ending February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three with Country Acres Pet Services. And Country Acres Animal Shelter for sheltering services for impounded dogs in consideration. Of two hundred dollars per dog and for other services for an administrative fee of five hundred dollars per contract month. And be it further resolved that the common council authorizes Mayor Steve. To extend said agreement for any necessary period of time until December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three.
I so moved.
I'll second.
Um, so this, this contract I already entered into because, uh, we were in. As we knew at the end of last year that we knew we were getting tight and as we discussed in our last meeting, it was. You know, uh, we did not have an agreement worked out yet, um. Mister Scott has reviewed the, uh, we have requested a review from the SBCA as well to get a quote of the two. And, uh, maybe you can speak to that a little bit, but we, uh, you know, had to, had to do something to get us in compliance because we're out of compliance with the law. Still trying to work something out with, and was, it hopes to work something out with SBCA.
So, in review of. The document we were sent, um. There, there's some things going on there that, that don't line up with the ethics of this city or this board. Um, to include but not limited to, uh, to board members, uh, sitting board members, actually being employees of the organization. Um, in review of the contract, um, if you wanna talk about an arduous. Drag through just kinda. You know, hour and a half of my life I'll never get back, um, you know, we found a lot of contradictions, a lot of things that were vague. Um, we even found prices that were listed separately on separate pages for the same items. Um, at this time, I wholeheartedly think that. Moving away from the current provider and to Country Acres is in the best interest of the city. Uh, the taxpayers and, uh, most likely the animals being served and the people who, you know, unfortunately do lose their animals and get them collected. Um, uh, you know, organization, uh, attention to detail, uh, things like that are things that if my dog gets lost. Um, I want an organization who's gonna do that. Uh, and I also want an organization who is, is transparent as we can get, um, what was stated in one page. Was stated in two sides, was a whole lot of confusion. And, um, what we need is we need to the point and to get the job done here. Um, there is gonna be these animal problems and, uh, I think the better provider's been chosen at this point.
Everybody have any questions?
I'm just wondering. Do we have a comparison of the two hundred per dog plus five hundred a month? When the director of the SBCA came to talk to us, she quoted a certain number of animals that they've taken in from Portland. Did we know that we have around that number again, how much it would cost us?
Well, it's gonna cost us fifty dollars left, less per dog. Um, with the new contract.
Okay.
And. We don't have a straight monthly fee, um.
You know, the processing fee for each one, but just to give you an example, we did the month of January already and it was seven, uh. Seven hundred dollars was what the fee was for the month of January.
Okay.
And, uh, I remember that we were paying them around eighty and they wanted two hundred.
Right.
So.
Pretty thousand.
Pretty, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah.
Two hundred thousand.
Yeah, so eighty thousand and two hundred thousand.
Right.
Eight seven hundred.
Okay.
Granted, it's slow time.
Right.
It's quiet, but, but still.
But that's, it, it would be interesting to, to track those numbers as it goes along.
Yeah, we will.
For next year.
Yeah.
To be able to make the decision.
We gotta keep working on solutions for sure.
And we also have asked for clarification about the numbers, financial, the number of animals picked up from the SBCA. And we can't get a straight answer. So we can't get the documentation, we can't get.
AJ, do you have something?
Oh, I was just gonna clarify, um, the upfront math, right? There is no monthly fee, but what the SBCA is asking for in the latest proposed contract, which is just for shelter services. Nothing else correct is, is to use dogs as an example, is two hundred and fifty dollars per dog upfront.
Mm-hmm.
And eighty dollars a day after that, just a shelter.
Seven, that's a pretty inspection fee.
Oh, yeah, and that's just, that's just the very, oh, yeah, that's, then there's another hundred and fifty dollars on that.
Right.
Uh, then there's another forty-five a month on that. It's per animal, expensive.
Okay.
Um, you know, and I have no problem with a not-for-profit coming in the blast and using the money. Um, but my other hangup is when you made a profit last year. And you. Ask your largest municipality to increase by not a hundred percent, but a hundred and fifty percent. And won't be free with your documents and your finances, um, this just backs up my fears. I, I think we're doing the right thing right now for the city of Portland.
Um, thank you for taking care of that.
Okay, anybody else have anything? Great. Okay, move it, please.
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Silliman.
Aye.
Councilmember Pannello.
Aye.
Councilmember Lane.
I abstained.
What was the, uh?
I, I think we, we could have worked with the SBCA a little more, I mean, I know you did a lot of work. Um, but, I mean, we are the biggest, uh, use of the SBCA. And I just, I, I thought maybe we could have worked a little.
Then no is okay, I, you wouldn't be able to abstain unless you have. Sorry.
Let me know.
All right, thank you.
This lane recorded. This, uh, councilmember Thompson.
Um. Aye.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Aye.
Councilmember Michaels.
Aye.
Uh, vote seven, ayes, one negays.
Agenda item number eighteen, authorize agreement with the Portland County Convention and Visitors Bureau for promotional services.
Resolved that the common council does hereby authorize Mayor Steve to execute an agreement with the Portland County Convention and Visitors Bureau for promotional services in lieu. Of the Portland County Convention and Visitors Bureau retaining a ten percent administrative fee to be applied to city funds administered.
Get a motion.
Oh, okay.
Just go. So on. So this is, uh, part of that downtown project that we're using that they're gonna administer, and they're doing our, um. Motion stuff and they web stuff and all the information that goes out, do an advertise for everybody, so we certainly figured out on that. Are you any questions?
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Silliman.
Aye.
Councilmember Pannello.
Aye.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Aye.
Councilmember Michaels.
Aye.
Then the item number nineteen, authorize agreement with CNS companies to conduct a stormwater study.
Resolved that the county council does hereby authorize Mayor Steve to sign an agreement with CNS companies. To conduct. A stormwater study for Hickory Park, Bellon Road and Forest Avenue in the amount of nine thousand nine hundred fifty dollars. Be expended from account A five one one zero dash five four one five.
Motion. The Carpenter.
I'll second.
Thank you. Um, any questions?
I had a couple of questions, is it clarified? What is the study gonna tell us, do we have a water issue?
Let's go, we answer this.
Yeah. Is it gonna give us anything, how to resolve a water issue? Okay, I'm just clarifying because I can tell you there's a water issue, I'll do it for nine ninety-five cents. No, ten thousand dollars.
You're hiring.
What CNS can provide as a badge?
Yeah, I was just wondering what we were getting out of it, other than it's all simply water issues.
The clarification here, uh, you folks already did a resolution for this last year.
Yeah.
Um, but it was, it was vague and it was for eighty-nine hundred, and I think CNS afterward. Um, went through, uh, a more thorough process, was more like ninety-nine fifty, so it's trying to choose out.
And I also know that this is turning into a study that we're gonna do five more and go back to the first one, each by nine hundred a month.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, some to get into any of the grant programs, you have to have the engineering studies, so that's more to this than that. Anybody else?
Do you have any kind of timeframe of, uh, how long this study is gonna take? Comes under rainfall.
We're gonna provide some funded information to CNS. And then they'll take that information, run it through some hydraulic, hydraulic, um, models. And give us some idea of time, what we can do to mitigate that.
No, so fall time, maybe, they, sometime in the fall?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm, I'm good with that, as long as, uh, they don't wait for midsummer whenever anything is dry when, uh, they do the study. Well, you don't have a water problem there. Springtime's a good time to jump on this.
Yeah, so. Yeah, okay, good.
They just made a site for the, a week or two ago.
Good.
Anybody else?
Who's running that, and that, is it, um, Jordan? His name is Bill Perrine.
Okay, thank you. Over please.
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Silliman.
Aye.
Councilmember Pannello.
Aye.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Aye.
Councilmember Michaels.
Aye.
Uh, agenda item number twenty, authorize request for proposals for the development of former Parker's school building.
Resolved that the common council does hereby accept the recommendations of the Parker School Ad Hoc Advisory Committee. And authorizes Mayor Steve to issue a request for proposals. From persons or entities interested in taking ownership of the building. And be it further resolved that such RFP should include in a minimal length of guaranteed ownership. Resume and past projects of the proposed owners, proposed reuse of the building. Potential businesses or residential tenants, screening process for business or residential tenants. Estimated project cost of investment, potential job creation, and proposed purchase price. And be it further resolved that proposals submitted in response to the RFP shall be reviewed by the Parker School Ad Hoc Advisory Committee. For the purpose of making further recommendations to Mayor Steve and the common council.
I will.
And how long, Miss Lane? But Peter, do you wanna comment on that, on any comment on, uh, that resolution at all?
I just wanna say that the proposal would be written in such a way that. Um, an emphasis on benefit to the community in the, in the neighborhood right around Parker is paramount. And all of us are interested in keeping the building. So I hazard to say we wouldn't be interested in proposals that tear it down.
Are there any current codes preventing different development, you see? Um, there are, um, many zoning, so that we would have to approach that based on what they propose. Um, but there are special use permits that could be granted through the committee if, if that necessary, so would be determined as part of that proposal.
I would have to agree with Katie a little bit on that, but I'm gonna tell you what, whoever gets their points, it's gonna suck their borders for twenty years, it's gonna come down anyway. Right, you gotta, you know, you're gonna have to waste a lot.
That's not gonna happen, it's not gonna happen.
We do have some.
Yeah, me too.
Instead of throwing it in there. We're wrong, you know. That, this same thing about the record too, by the way. Superbowl's coming up.
Okay, all right, anybody else? Hold me on, who has a question?
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Silliman.
Aye.
Councilmember Pannello.
Aye.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Aye.
Councilmember Michaels.
Aye.
Agenda item number twenty-one, declare police vehicles as surplus and send to.
Resolved that the common council hereby declares involved listed vehicles. Utilized by the Portland Police Department as surplus. And grants permission for the agency to sell the vehicles on auction international with any proceeds from the sale being placed in the Portland. City Police Department two thousand twenty-three budget account eighty-three one two zero dash five two zero six zero zero. To be used for the purchase of new police vehicles and or equipment.
I so moved.
Mr. Scott. Carpenter. And they still need a few other things, like the SWAT van and interior van and some of these other items that need to be updated, so we'll see a way to rotate them around. Anybody else?
We missed a couple, there's gonna be like a couple of twenty-twenty threes in there, they're, they're flexible. Right, okay. The van doesn't have no miles.
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Silliman.
Aye.
Councilmember Pannello.
Aye.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Aye.
Councilmember Michaels.
Aye.
Hey, we actually did pretty well so far. Discussion items, uh, Director of Administration Finance Surge update, so, um.
Any.
There's a, this basically a timeline that's still there, uh, looks like there's been like over twenty-four applicants. Which is good news, um, and, um, preliminary, again, I, we don't see them yet, it's up to the consultant that's seeing them. But there is been, um, you know, I think some good, strong candidates, somewhere at least half or better than half is saying they're strong candidates. Um, and, um, so I know that, and some of them have had kind of previous experiences that they manage or manage, so. I think that's all good stuff, excited for that, uh, excited to hopefully move these dates up a little bit, that would be great, but we're still working on trying to get that to happen, so. Uh, the plan would be, uh, you know, as you see here, uh, the virtual interviews and candidates, and so we get to the, towards the end, we'll have introductions and. Interviews and everybody have a chance to meet and greet as well. So I think that's going pretty well and, um, I appreciate the committee's hard work on that. Uh, discussion item number two, uh, the, as you, as you all know, we were due for a, uh, revow last year. And we held off last year to this year so that, because the markets basically righted themselves, which I believe is the best decision. But since then, our, um, assessor has became, uh, pretty ill, um, he is recovering now and he's better. But he was seventy percent of the way complete with this, with that. With the revows, so in the process, you know, if, we'd have to go start over and get somebody else in, if we decide to do it, it's off the link to try to get them done in time. And he was seventy percent of the way, and then, then when you start to grieve this process afterwards, it's really better to have somebody that's gonna manage it for, for continually on. So based on that, I just, uh, felt in the best interest, we would pull back and wait and do the revows next year. The negative impact on us is we budgeted for some increase in for this year's budget, assuming that we were going to be able to have some more revenues from the, you can, remember. Cause the revows, you know, they, a third of the people, uh, will maintain the same, a third of the, they pay higher and a third will pay less. You know what I mean, so it writes, writes itself out a little bit, but we're at eighty percent tax rate, this will, this will clean it up. Uh, so unfortunately, you know, due to his illness and to take this threat off of him and his staff. Uh, we made the decision to scrap that back till next year, so that would be pushed off. Um. I don't think any questions, or any, I just wanted to do something, so it's that. Uh, in, and, and we received a letter that, uh, we had an ongoing, uh, problem with our homeless efforts and mental need services, um. Uh, and so you see here, uh, this was in letter, this went to the social services. I talked to some of the counseling, uh, the legislators in Hopkins County as well, uh, but we've had some level-two, uh. Sex offenders that are not registered giving month vouchers into our local hotels, we've had some criminals that have. Sex offenders that are not registered giving month vouchers into our local hotels, we've had some criminals that have. Arrest warrants in Tom, in the city that, that have been brought over here, given month vouchers, uh, one is, uh, you know, and then. Uh, was involved in stabbing, we've had mental health issues, we've had to have our police officers sit and watch them. For twenty-four hours till the court heard him and then they went to the jail, now the jail's watching them for twenty-four hours to the mental conditions, I'll just share you. Couple of stats that I was able to pull, uh, in twenty twenty-two. Um, up to a hundred and fifty-five mental health people that are brought to the emergency room. Uh, in Cortland, in the Cortland Hospital, sixteen percent of them were from the zip code. Of Hopkins County. As well, this year so far, we've had eighty-six and twenty-three percent of them, twenty of them are from. Hopkins County. Well, last year, I, when I figured out that this was happening with DSS, I had a different conversation with the commissioner, which I have again. And now I've been all office of mental health and some others because there's some. Wrongdoings here that's not good for those people, so not that I don't wanna help those people or we shouldn't wanna help those people, but they're not being helped appropriately. The last thing I'm gonna do is mental health people is take them out of their, take them out of their environment. So it's, it's a concern and, uh, this, this is, uh, like every other rabbit hole, it seems like I keep digging in the city, it keeps. Getting deeper and deeper, so I just wanted to make everybody aware that this is going on and, uh, you know, ask them to cease and desist, and at some point I'll go back to the council and say. You know, let's take legal action from there, um, the county has, uh, our county has met, our mental health and everybody, we've had together. As agencies trying to come up with solutions and ways to work about it, um, but, um, but again, it is a global crisis that everybody's having. And I do empathize with them in some aspects that they're get to the point where, you know, they have people that are not doing well. And then they're in their hotels, trashing their hotels and they have to displace them somewhere. So they don't have a choice, but the hotel don't take them, and we have, we're getting some of that too, and so the people refuse to get help. Or they get sanctioned from DSS and those are truly the homeless people. And that's the problem is, so how do we deal with that and? You know, I, you know, and I could get political, but bail reform came up when I was in Albany and, you know, the bail reform, I think there's some great points to it, but I think. Needs to be retracted somewhat, I know it needs to be retracted somewhat because we still have people missing, there was eight hundred. Mental health issue, uh, businesses in New York State that shut down this year. Because they got a lot of their referrals from the jails, so a lot of people end up in the jail, but that's where they get the referral and their help. So then without having that directive action, they don't have to take, and the federal government has. A fourteen-day law that's on the books that you have mental health issues, you have to be in, once you get admitted. The E one ward, then you have to sit there for fourteen days and voluntarily get help. So we've had nurses go on concussions that'll probably never work again, we've had police officers with broken noses, we've had all kinds of issues that. The police response, uh, I don't even know, I haven't shared with some police chief yet, but, um. This year alone, we've had sixty-six times we've had a woman helping. Last year, eight hundred and fifty-nine, July to July, eight hundred and fifty-nine times, so our resources are being, uh. Drawn pretty strong and, uh, pretty hard and, uh, this is something we're really trying to get attention to, so. In meeting with the county, some of the legislators over there, we've, we're working on a resolution that I wanna bring to the board and hopefully will all support it, I'm trying to get it to go to NICOM. Conference of mayors and NISAC as well, that conference of, um, the counties, to try to get kind of managers, excuse me. To address this as a global problem and trying to get the attention that it really needs from the federal level and from the local level, this is to help us with these problems.
Mayor Steve, uh, you said eight hundred and fifty-nine or sixty-nine, uh, one of those numbers. Just to clarify on the stat, you're saying that all of those are from top.
Oh, correct.
And I wanna make.
Those are just mental health people.
At the, at the hospital.
Yes.
And so, you wanna hi- highlight.
Stay to the percentage.
Yeah, wanna highlight. The, the fact that we have some concerns of our own within our own county, and I think you've talked about that a number of times, so I. I applaud you on that. But as, as a city, you know, we, we have to look at how we handle that, I think we have some good news come into town. Um, with the county mental health, uh, the new building proposal and that going through, like. We, eight hundred and sixty-nine, eight hundred and fifty-nine, I think. Sixteen percent, what have you, there's still some need for us to look at, look at our, our city.
Oh, absolutely, and some of them can help this, the emergency room, for example, they have three, they have three rooms, or four rooms, but three rooms handle three each. And then they're going by itself, and if you get an aggressive person, then that takes one person out of there. Uh, the other thing we're getting a lot of is, um, people being, you know, sort of sponsored diversion, so. If it takes up those doctors and we are in the cause of diversion, I, you're, you're absolutely right, a hundred percent. That it's not just Hopkins County that issue, that is an issue, we have our own issues obviously by those numbers I just gave you, but, um. And, uh, but we. Drawing our resources to that is, is another problem, so hospitals addressing the security aspect, so that's been helpful, so those numbers will go down. Uh, hopefully it's for the, for their help and then they're rebuilding their mental wards so that it'll be more conducive. Or instead of everybody seeing it in, in the public, but these are just, uh, general problems, and we have, you know, I have a five-prime approach, we're trying to fix the housing. We're with the local landlords of DSS, we're trying to work with courts, and they did, you heard, made their presentation about the whole court. We're trying to get, uh, more people here to, uh, advise people, whether it's financial, you know, and that are actually in the courtroom and doing that, so we're making a big effort. To try and do that and mental health, to even parking the Coby van across the street with the mental health. Of course, our police officers are, are all trained as well in mental health crisis intervention, and that's been highly successful, there's been a lot of success rates there. But mental health people are less likely to, uh, be receptive of a police officer coming up to them than somebody else, so we're trying every avenue we can, so. But, but again, you know, not recognizing that we don't have a problem, but recognizing that we can't handle somebody else's ass. And it hurts something costly to us in, in the long term and, uh, and, you know, we're, you know, and, you know, we, we've kind of made a, kind of made a verbal agreement. If it does have to happen, we need to reach out, we can't, you can't put a level-two sex offender in our city without us knowing about it, right? You can't put.
They notify us when we bring these people over there?
They do not.
No, I, and.
I figured this out because, you know, I had, I got a complaint for giving drugs about a bunch of thefts, and I happened to look at the three police reports and noticed. The home addresses and, and again, the one that drives me, probably this little bit of a soapbox here, drives me absolutely insane is. A level-two sex offender is registered as homeless. I don't know how you, you know, and that, within ten days of moving, they have to notify where they live, but how can be, how can be a registered offender and be registered as homeless? So it kind of just infuriates me a little bit that they can just, and then, then give them a thirty-day voucher from here, you know, so.
I ran into an individual on the street, and I stopped him walking, I'm gonna get my hair done, I said, can I help you? Says, I need money. I'm not giving you money, you know, we are, so why are you here? They sent me over from that, they're gonna wanna be here, wanna get bad. So it is happening.
Yeah, and they're, and they're actually, and, and that was my stats, I was trying to get to, as far as some hospitals, they're actually bringing them over here for the mental health and we can't provide. Our, our hospital can't do it now, which is causing diversion, so the diversion means when the hos- hospital's full. If somebody comes in, when an ambulance call, they turn that to another hospital, that's a circus or whatever. Or, um, and so, and, you know, there's an ambulance, we have an ambulance crisis too, everybody is across the state, there's another meeting, there's one on that. So everybody's trying all these different avenues to try to get that happen, we can't have people waiting forty minutes for an ambulance to show up or, you know, um, those kinds of situations, so. You know, uh, I sat down today, I was on my way back, I was writing down all the problems that I have, we have as a city. And these are ninety, I came up with this full-page problems that probably most of you didn't know about. And, uh, it's very, uh, aggravating sometimes when you get to some of the, you know, trash. So, but, uh, we'll continue to work at it, and I'd like to know that we're diligent to do what we can in both efforts to help these people and to. Hold other people accountable that we can't allow that, we are not enough backgrounds, not gonna allow that.
Thank you for being physically responsible and looking out for the safety of the people in the city because some of the stuff. That me, you initiate this letter, is just absolutely appalling when we're here working as hard as we can to make the city better. And another entity is, is tearing it down and undermining it.
And this agency I wrote away. For years, and I've been promising to be major adjustments in that agency because there's so many things they did wrong at so many levels that I can't really probably talk about. Probably talk about more than I should have, but it's, it's just, it's just, it's not good when you, when you're looking to that kind of situation. So with that good news, we'll try to move on and, uh, but we are aggressively working at it, I know everybody sees it, everybody's out there, they see it. You know, we're addressing them, we're trying to approach them, I, I, and we'll keep looking at that, so. Does anybody else have anything else, do better? Motion to adjourn. Mr. Scott, all's in favor.
Aye.